I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council activity reports, mine's fairly brief. It's been a quiet week for me. Councilmember Hertzberg.
We had a finance meeting last week.
Okay, all right, thank you. Councilmember.
We had a Policies and Procedures Committee meeting last week. And then, I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank Belinda and Ron, especially along with everyone else in City Hall, for stepping up to the plate and all the good work everyone's been doing. You guys have really been fantastic the last two weeks, and I wanted to publicly thank you for that.
All right, well said. Councilmember Gilmore.
Policies and Procedures.
And I bet we have a budget and finance coming from Councilmember LeBeau.
Yep, the budget and finance, that's about it.
Okay, all right. Then we have no department head reports, consent agenda, the minutes. Sir?
Yes, Ron. Could I just make one comment?
Yep.
From CenterPoint Energy.
Okay.
I'd just like to thank everyone for the work that they did here. They said the community here really helped them out quite a bit, and they are now 100 percent. Everybody has been contacted, so.
As of this afternoon.
As of this afternoon.
The last straggler finally got.
And also as of today, the compo site has been closed for the year.
Okay. And between CenterPoint and whether or not the compo site was open were the two questions this past week. All right, thank you very much for those words, too. And then, we have the consent agenda, which will improve also the minutes from the Budget and Finance Committee meeting on page one. The vouchers from our update totaling $77,033.06, that's quite a bit less than last time if I recall. And we'll be moving up the two items dealing with Town and Country Days, so our guests can get home and take care of other business. So that's the consent agenda.
I'll move to accept.
Second.
Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by LeBeau to approve the consent agenda discussion. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, none? Okay, then we have two Town and Country, we have to wait till 6:05 for the one, so. Let's take the carnival location first, and we'll deal with that. And that is on page 59. And since there will be some issues with the location at the school, question about where to locate the carnival and the carnival lights and other things that go along with the Town and Country Days.
Yes. Obviously, with the referendum going through, we were unable to have the location over at school. Tried several different areas over at school to use it, but the underwater watering systems don't allow us to go really anywhere else. And the pavement itself is not road grade, so putting the rides on there would only do harm. So, at this point, we're really looking to move again. And we would like to go to the location next to the ambulance garage, as it's the most logical place for us to move to. Not only does it provide enough room, but allows us to keep it there for years to come until things start to get developed. That's what I would like to do. I don't know if you have questions on that or concerns.
Biggest concern I would have was the ambulance getting out and the ambulance people getting in. And where we'd have to have designated parking, so they couldn't park on the tar road coming down into the ambulance. We could figure out how to get people in and not park on that road, because when the guys come in for the ambulance, they're going to be coming in.
Yeah.
And you're going to have.
The thought would be to.
I guess we'd have to figure that out.
Yeah, the thought would be to put a snow fence all the way to the length from the, basically where the sewer area is there, the RV dump, all the way down past. So basically, there's no entrance from the ambulance garage road. It would be strictly from the RV dump area road, keeping the people separated from the ambulance garage and the area we're looking to use.
That would be the driveway on the south part of where you go into the RV dump.
I was in contact with Steve Stang, and he said as long as there's a fence, he feels that he can work this out with the chamber, so it is adequate. You know, we would also have access off of 34 where we could bring people down. I don't know if they'd want to move the, all the RVs up to that area, that's a possibility. But Steve felt very comfortable that with a fence, this is very doable. Just on the other sites, I did contact Jason Furchy, and he said that site would also be workable if we wanted to look at that. The airport view site, I would really not be in favor of. There's too many issues with the airport there. And downtown, I guess I don't feel is a real great site either. So I guess I would agree the Lake Avenue out there is probably our best option.
Is there enough remote, do you think, for all the parking and all the?
If we can use the property, you know, we've got 20 acres there, so yes, I'm sure that we can find enough room. It's just a matter of getting it mowed and ready to.
Pretty stable for people not getting stuck and everything out there?
If there's going to be inclement weather, that's always an issue, yes. It's just something that we would have to, and LFR will be.
That's no matter where you go.
Yeah, we've never gotten four inches of rain the day before we set up. I mean, that was only like two years ago, right? We'll figure it out.
You know, one year we had it behind the school.
Yeah, that was an issue.
That was, that was the deluge year, and that tore up that ground pretty, but, you know, yeah. But you never know.
We, as a group, definitely know that things are going to need to be repaired. If that happens, repairs are going to need to be happened, and that's the way it is, so.
Would that lot, that Drilling owns be fenced off, too?
That would have to be fenced off, yes.
Yes, on the other side as well, yep. So basically, we'd take the snow fence on both sides of that area, all the way back past the wildcard pulling area, where there's that stretch there. So there's, I mean, really, there's more room there than there was at the school.
Are they still doing the wildcard pulling out there?
Yep.
So there'll be room for both?
All in the same area.
And the parade route is the same?
Everything looks to be the same. We're not making any changes, yep. We wish we wouldn't have to move, but unfortunately.
Um, go ahead.
Nope.
Go ahead.
I was going to approve something.
Oh, okay, I was just going to ask that, you know, do you have kind of a temporary layout or idea in mind how that would lay out in there?
Honestly, I haven't even contacted the carnival yet, just because of the fact that there's so much out there. I mean, I can definitely put that together with him, get an idea of layout, see if he's going to have any issues with it. But I know it's a definite softer area.
Can I interject? Last year, when I had talked to John, or the year before, I don't know, it had to be two years.
It took.
I took him around to all the different sites, the Catholic Church area and everything. And he went out to the ambulance garage area and said that they would have absolutely no problem. In fact, it would be a nice area to have, because the ground must have a little more sturdiness to it even than where the football field was.
I suppose it was tilled more recent than the football or the practice field, maybe.
That's possible.
You could ask the engineer, he might know, but probably doesn't make any difference. Yeah, my main concern was, you know, the safety of the pedestrians and traffic coming and going with ambulance personnel going in and coming out. If those can be addressed, I have, I have no issue. I know there's a handful of nonprofits that would be probably affected also. They'll have to adjust, he'll contact them and.
Yep. Yep, everybody will be in contact. As soon as we have land that we can, you know, choose to do nonprofits, like the Incans and stuff, we'll be, we're going to make a food court area this year is what we're going to try and do, so it has a little bit more of a, an area where it's not such a line. So basically, everybody involved can have a little bit more access, I guess. Try something different. Now that we're moving, we're going to have to do some changes there, too.
Hydrant wise, we're okay?
Yes. Yes, make sure they have water there, and obviously, for power, everybody will have to bring generators in.
Yep, and they do that anyways, so.
Chief, do you have something?
Yeah, I've got a question. I know, Adam, you and I talked. Was there any conversation with Steve about finding an alternate area to house the ambulances during that time?
I didn't have a conversation with him, Ron did.
No, I didn't. Steve felt that would not be necessary. Yes, it was brought up to him, but he felt if there's a fence across there, it would be fine.
And this is why I bring it up. I know we had talked about having that road potentially for some of the bigger rides like we have now. You know, the Ferris wheel, I think, and then the fireball end up on the road. I don't know if that property would conducive to house those on grass versus tar. My one big concern would be whether or not the access to the RV dump is going to be wide enough for vehicles to go in and out of. So if we fence off that entire road, that could create an issue with vehicles coming in and out of that area if that access is only wide enough for one vehicle to get in and out of there.
I mean, then the other thing that we could do is have people standing, you know, as parking, have a station there with the chamber manned at all times kind of thing during the carnival. I mean, it's not ideal, but we can definitely come up with volunteers to do so, to make sure people aren't using that road and going down in the wrong direction, so.
I was wondering if some kind of a quickly movable barricade or something, because I can see people, you know, driving in there anyway, or, you know, well marked, they have someone drive all the way down there and then make a loop around or come around behind the ambulance garage, or who knows?
Yeah, the barricades itself that we use are not heavy by no means, so it's pretty easy to change and move if we need to, or if people going into the ambulance garage would need to, so.
I'll make a motion to move the 2020 Town and Country Days Carnival to the City Lake Avenue property, because it seems like it's okay with the ambulance and nobody has any big conflicts with it.
Second.
Motion by Gilmore, seconded by Rinkie to approve or to move the 2020 Town and Country Days Carnival to, well, I guess we're not moving it, but we're allowing it to be located at the ambulance, the Lake Avenue property by the ambulance garage and RV dump. Is that adequate?
Adequate.
Okay.
Appreciate it. If anybody's got anything else, let me know.
Okay, we do a motion, and we haven't passed it yet. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, none? Now we have it. Okay, it being 6:05 and a little more. We have the street dance, Town and Country Days Street Dance to deal with, and that's on page 67. And we've had some questions about where it's going to be, what it's going to be, and insurance and license. We got those questions taken care of now, right?
Yes, we do. Whoa, okay, I have a loud voice anyways.
Yep.
My name's Yan Kedat, and I'm on, I'm here on behalf of the Backdraft Bash, the Fire Relief Association, and our committee with the city and stuff. What we're looking at is needing the approval, confirm that we can move up to the ice hockey arena. We have talked to the neighbors already, and they have no issue with the noise. We're going to give a couple tickets for them also. And then, we did get the packet for the license, and the license will cost us $75, with no matter what kind of alcohol that's going to be served there. And then, we also have heard from Donna at the insurance company that depending, the insurance cost is based on what we think our net proceeds will be of our whole event. And so, there's different dollar amounts that come up. And what we've been doing is 3,000 net proceeds right in that ballpark, and that's why the cost was always $533. And now, the next chunk that they gave us was up to 6,000 net proceeds, and that would cost $1,013, and then it can go up from there. I did review spreadsheets from previous years, and I think going, we could be so lucky to get over the 6,000, but I think we're going to be covered comfortably at the 6,000 with all the expenses and stuff that were happening. So we're looking for approval on moving the backdraft up to the ice arena, and now that we have the dollar amount that it will cost for the license, or for the insurance. The state events, or the Stearns County Auditor even said it's not required for insurance, but we would never take that chance and not have insurance, the chamber nor the firefighters, so we definitely will get that.
Do you need us to specify which type of license you're applying for?
No, you don't. Well, I take that back. I told her that it was rail drinks and hard beer, that type of thing. And she's like, that's $75 instead of 50, so it is $25 extra.
Okay. Well, I move to conduct the 2020 Town and Country Days Street Dance at the ice arena.
Second.
Motion by Rinkie, seconded by Hertzberg to conduct the 2020 Town and Country Days Street Dance at, what was it, Township, or at the ice arena area. Township Ice Arena Parking Lot, is that correct?
Yes, it'd be either in the hockey rink, or it'll move inside.
Okay. Any other question or discussions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, none, that carried?
Thank you.
Move that the city apply for the insurance, the amount of $6,000 coverage.
Second.
Motion by Rinkie, seconded by, was that you, Alicia? LeBeau, to apply for the insurance in the amount of $6,000 event income. Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, none, that carried?
I move that the city authorize the Fire Relief Association to apply for a hard liquor or rail and hard beer license.
I'll second.
Motion by Rinkie, seconded by LeBeau to authorize the Fire Relief Association to apply for the rail liquor, hard liquor, and regular rear hard beer. I'm not sure what the term is, it's more than three, two. A license, discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, none, that carried, all right. Bring on summer. All right, then, off of our update in page three here, we've got a report coming from Policies and Procedures. They met recently. And then, looking at job description, search things. Go ahead there, Councilor Rinkie.
So Policies and Procedures met last week. We talked a little bit about how we wanted to move forward with finding and hiring a new city administrator. We took a brief look at the job description that we had used in the past, and ultimately, the conversation then looked towards whether or not we wanted to use a search firm or an executive search firm in helping us find a new city administrator rather than doing this on our own. So we had asked that Ron and Belinda locate some companies that might be able to do that. And then, given the cost of that, we thought that would be a decision that this whole council should make. So, right now, the question of this council is whether or not we want to do this sort of on our own or hire a search firm to help us find somebody. And it looks like Ron had sent out some information earlier today.
They had gotten a list of, well, the league doesn't recommend anybody, but they gave a list of available ones, and Ron and Belinda contacted someone, have three.
We contacted four of them, and three of them did respond back. The other one said if we would wait till after January, then they would be glad to submit a.
So, speaking from my experience, I think going through an agency like this is probably worth our time and effort. That's my opinion.
I'd kind of like some more time to look through these.
Yeah, I don't, I don't suspect that we're going to make a decision on this tonight, because we, are we going to do something job description wise also, or?
If we're going to do, yes, I guess the council needs to make a decision on that. Or do you want to hire the firm first, so the firm can look at the job description? Or did we want to just be ready to advertise once we hire them? I guess that's a decision the council has to make also. I mean, I guess it comes down to exactly what are we looking for?
Because I think the first discussion should be whether or not we hire a firm. And keep in mind that the school hires a firm, the hospital does it internally, because they're a little bit larger than everybody else.
One of these was used by the school last, wasn't it?
That is correct, yes. I did talk to a board member from the school, and they did recommend, or they thought very highly of the process of using a firm. Big River Group is the one that the school used.
Okay.
And Baker Tilly, if you're going to have a firm, take a look at the job description. My understanding is they would be most familiar from the start with our work.
Was Baker Tilly? Yeah, it was the only ones who didn't offer a guarantee.
Would the council want to interview these firms or just take time and go through them? And if you want to call them on your own, I'm sure they'd be open to that. Or if we want to do a telephone conference, I guess we would need direction from the council at this point.
It would be difficult, and I mean, not difficult, but it would be to do it as a group. You would have to call a special meeting to do that. Councilmembers are certainly encouraged to do that on their own. I have had a discussion with the Big River Group.
And I stand corrected, Baker Tilly was, they did have a guarantee.
A guarantee, yep.
Yep, it was the Baker who did.
Yeah.
So can.
Big River, I mean.
Are we going to table this till our next meeting?
Yes.
Is that, okay.
I, I'm assuming so, but that's up to the council.
I guess, I guess I'd like to make the motion to go with a firm, executive search firm. And then, we can decide from there, but I think I would like to definitely go with a firm. And that's my motion.
Okay.
I would second that. I'm wondering if the right way to go forward is, once we get this decision, then Policies and Procedures can interview these firms however they feel appropriate and make a recommendation on who we use.
That.
That could be part of my motion.
Pardon?
I would amend that into my motion.
You will add that into your motion. Did you get that, Jennifer? Because I wasn't writing.
He's going to amend the motion to go with the firm to include Policies and Procedures interviewing the firms?
Mm-hmm.
And recommend.
And recommend.
A recommendation.
Make a recommendation to council.
Yep, that was his, his motion. He just took a break and repeated his motion, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Are they going to be able to do that before our next council meeting?
We have a meeting.
The ninth?
Ninth of December. Oh, sorry, we're meeting right before. We can track. Our meeting's at, I believe, 4:30 before our council meeting on that same Monday. And I know, looking at all of our schedules, that's the soonest we could have gotten in. So we're not going to be able to meet any sooner than that. I think we should be able to make some sort of a recommendation by then.
I'm sure you'll do what you can. We do have a motion, we should vote on that before much more discussion. So the motion is that we do use an executive search firms, and Policies and Procedures will contact them. And the intent is to come up with a recommendation at our next council meeting. Is that adequate? They understand? Okay, all in favor, aye? If there's any more discussion, I should ask. Any other question or discussions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
I oppose.
None, that carried. And did you send all three job description as it is, and that, or not yet?
To these firms?
To these.
No, we have not.
Okay. And you will do that? I would imagine they would like to have that. Anything else on this? Okay. Get back to my other page here. Then, item B is interim city administrators' compensation, and we do have an update there that's on page 43. We did hear back from AFSCME, and they have signed off on an agreement to increase the hourly wage for Belinda Ludwig, who was an AFSCME member, and with Ron Mergen, who is not. There should not be any issues, so we're looking for a motion as on page 43 there.
I'll make the motion to approve the $2 per hour increase in pay retroactive to November 13, 2019, for Ron Mergen and Belinda Ludwig, co-interim city administrators, and authorize the mayor to sign the AFSCME union letter.
Second.
Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Rinkie to approve a $2 per hour increase in pay retroactive to November 13, 2019, for Ron Mergen and Belinda Ludwig, co-interim city administrators, and authorize the mayor to sign the AFSCME union letter. Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, none, and that carried. Anything else on item B?
Do we need to address retroactive payroll or making modification, anything that's already gone out? Is that included with what we've already done?
For these two, that's included. Yep.
Just making sure.
Yep, that will be taken care of. Then, on to item D, designating depositories, and the chief financial officer on page 37. And we do have a resolution, 2019-35, designating those.
A move to approve Resolution, 2019-35, designating depositories of funds, designating a chief financial officer, and establishing authority to act.
Second.
Motion by Rinkie, seconded by Hertzberg to approve Resolution, 2019-35, designating depositories of funds, designate a chief financial officer, and establish authority to act. Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, none, that carried. And then, item D, the, in regards to the certificates of deposit, Resolution, 2019-34. Bill had a little bit of a question on that, but I think we've got that taken care of. Just want to mention that to the rest of the council, so that they're.
My main concern about both these resolutions was just how does the financial institution know who the person is, you know? But if they, if they accept some other letter from the city saying that these are the people in those roles at this time and will notify you of whatever changes, I don't know, I don't know how that's been done historically. But it's just a little bit, to me, that if they, if I was a bank, I would know who, who I should let do these things based on.
The intent is to have a resolution in place and then contact the parties individually, all having to go through another resolution.
Right. Right.
In January, the credit union, we had to do this with Gene Sweeney coming off the council, and they were comfortable with the paragraph, the company's item H, that states who the account signers will be, and that was sufficient for them at that time.
Okay, so we have item D, resolution, two thousand nineteen dash thirty-four.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution, two thousand nineteen dash thirty-four, regarding certificates of deposits, savings accounts, money markets, and safety deposit boxes.
Second.
Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Rinkie, to approve resolution, two thousand nineteen dash thirty-four, regarding certificates of deposits, savings accounts, money markets, and safety deposit boxes. Discussion, all in favor, aye?
I oppose.
None, and that carries. And then, the managed assets group, wealth management investments, and other, approve those documents.
Belinda, I meant to email you earlier, and I forgot, but wasn't there a second investment company that we had been working with?
Well, our previous salesperson for that, Rich Knowlton, the company that he worked with, that we were with, no longer deals with city investments. So, he went to RBC Company, and he has been, he has continued to be in contact with the city, letting us know about investments, so on and so forth. I believe there's a motion taken from the council that stated that the administrator could invest in both locations, or any location that they saw fit. But I don't think any signed documentation has been given to him.
Actually, that's why we're not addressing that one.
Right.
Then, I move to approve the documents, entity, entity account information form, non-corporate resolution, certification of beneficial owners, from Meg Wealth Management, adding Belinda Ludwig as an authorized signer and control person for the city of Painesville.
Second.
Motion by Rinkie, seconded by LeBeau, as exactly on the action sheet, page forty-three. Discussion, all in favor, aye?
I oppose.
None, and that carries. Thank you. And then, okay, Ron, you wanna fill us in on why we had to spend this money here for the water treatment?
Sure. The water treatment plant, I think everybody's aware of that, is a iron and manganese removal, a thousand gallons a minute, that is preceded by the VOC plant. Obviously, it, VOC plant, it blows the air up through that filter media, and strips all the organic compounds, benzene, et cetera, off. In the process of that, you know, that's the good part of what it does, it also strips off, or it removes some carbon dioxide. In that process, when you remove the carbon dioxide, that increases pH. And when you increase the pH, I guess what happens also is, it allows the calcium carbonate to precipitate out. And when it precipitates out, it will grab onto the first thing it sees, and in the process, that is our filter media. And so, what was happening is our filter media was becoming plugged up. We were getting shorter backwash runs, and we were seeing some iron breakthrough. So, we talked to the people down at Toca Filter, and the Department of Health, and with their blessings, they both said we needed to treat it, or shock treat it with a citric acid. It is a food-grade citric acid. So, we went through that process, and obviously, it is not a cheap process. But from here on out, their recommendation is that we go to a continual fee of citric acid, just to keep that pH adjustment down.
I understand you spent a little time over there on this.
We did spend, took us the better part, for sure, three weeks, yes. Hopefully, it is behind us. There are some plants that we've heard of that let it go, and had to actually go into the filter plants with jackhammers and knock it out. It becomes that hard, almost like concrete. So, I guess our results for the iron and manganese removal have come back, you know, they're not exactly where we'd like to see them, but they have come back a long ways, and like I said, hopefully, it's behind us.
Okay.
Move to approve the invoice from Hawkins Inc., in the amount of eight thousand, thirty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents for water treatment chemicals.
Second.
Motion by Rinkie, seconded by LeBeau, to approve the invoice from Hawkins Inc., in the amount of eight thousand, thirty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents for water treatment chemicals. Discussion.
I just have one for Ron or Chuck. Is this something we should've been aware of when we put in the stripper plant?
Being aware, I guess this money would've been spent either way. I guess if we would've bought the chemical upfront and started adding it, the dollar amount would be likely identical, possibly more. I guess the range, we were told to watch at, if pH got up above eight point five. I guess we never really got close to that. PH coming into the treatment plants, about a seven, six, seven, seven, and going out, we were around at eight, one. Yes, we were warned of it, that this could happen. We were also told, make sure we check our filter in the VOC tower. That is actually perfectly clean. There is no evidence of anything precipitating out there. It all came out in the filter media inside the plant.
Yeah, there was, like you said, there was discussion during the process, and there wasn't acid feed system put in, you know, with, with the project in anticipation, and if it was needed in the future, it could be utilized.
Okay, anything else?
So, does this amount, is this just for the cleaning of the filters, or does that also include treatments, ongoing treatments?
This is strictly for the treatments that we did, and there will be, each month, we will have to, I'm gonna say approximately, at least a hundred gallons a month that we will be feeding.
Okay.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
I oppose. None, and that carries. The item H, another signing issue here, for motion to remove Renee Eckery from all city accounts at Central Minnesota Credit Union, and replace her with Ron Mergen.
I'll make the motion to remove Renee Eckery from all the city accounts at Central Minnesota Credit Union, and replace her with Ron Mergen.
Second.
Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Hertzberg, to remove Renee Eckery from all the city accounts at Central Minnesota Credit Union, and replace her with Ron Mergen. Discussion, all in favor, aye?
I oppose.
None, and that carries. Then, item sixty-one, and we have treasurer to appoint Belinda Ludwig, and the data practices compliance officers, so motion to approve those.
I'll make the motion to approve the city appointment as presented.
Second.
Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by LeBeau, as on the action sheet, page sixty-one. Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
I oppose. None, and that carries. Early voting in Stearns County, we approved the early voting, but now, we're looking to get somebody trained, and we have a couple volunteers, Kristen Leither and Stephanie Approve sending one of those to training.
I move to approve the agreement between Stearns County and the city of Painesville for providing early voting to the residents of Stearns County, and allowing Kristen Leither and Stephanie Saraki to attend necessary election training.
Second.
Motion by Rinkie, seconded by LeBeau, as on the action sheet, page sixty-two, in regards to the early voting. Discussion, all in favor, aye?
I oppose.
None, and that carries. And I see our chief left, but we have received some bids for surplus property from the fire department, the two thousand one Polaris Indy Sports Snowmobile, Dusty Velcam, five hundred dollars, the two thousand one Triton XT two-place snowmobile trailer from Dusty, three hundred dollars, and a two thousand one Orion ambulance sled from Christian Aid Ministry, search and rescue care of Daniel Chup, for eleven hundred dollars. Looking for motion to approve those.
I'll make the motion to accept the bids received for the surplus fire department equipment.
Second.
Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Rinkie, to accept the bids received, as on page sixty-six. Discussion.
I, sir. I feel the snowmobile and the trailer below wholesale. Now, I don't know if we can re, reject those two and accept one, and re, redo them, or... But it's below, I talked to a couple dealers today, and they said, I would, you know, I would've given you four hundred for the sled, and that's to resell and make profit, so, I mean, the trailer. Sled, he said, should be worth two thousand. I think that was a little extreme, but it should've been worth a thousand. And by re-submitting, our low bidder could reconsider if he wants. And I think they should be parked out by the RV dump, so people can know what we're trying to sell, because our legal notice in the paper, nobody looks up. And the, I'm in favor of the ambulance sled, I'm not sure you'd get a whole lot more for that, unless you put a lot of time and effort calling ski lodges, and doing whatever. But I really feel this time of year, prime season, that trailer and snowmobile should've brought more.
I don't have your appetite in front of me, but I believe our standard appetite for bids, we reserve the right to reject any of the bids.
Yep.
So, you could accept one, and reject two. But I'm in a whole danger of looking at the appetite, but I'm pretty confident that's where our appetite was set.
Did we, did we have a reserve bid on those?
No.
No.
I mean, you have, you have to be comfortable that, that you'll make enough to be worth running the appetizer. And it's not bigger than the appetizer. But if you, if you think you're gonna get another five, six hundred bucks, it's worth doing it, I suppose, you know?
Between the two, I, but if we're gonna redo them, I'd love to see them parked by the RV dump, and a sign, and let people know what we have.
Do these get posted online anywhere, or is it just the paper?
I'm just checking. I believe they were just posted in the paper.
Do we have a tab on our website for surplus property, for some? If there's not a specific tab, there could be, I think a lot of times it goes just on the front page, current.
Is there any reason why Kristen couldn't put this out on the city's Facebook page as well?
I wish she could.
Well, we can vote down the motion, if that's the way the council, because the motion is for.
Yeah, we need to vote on the motion.
Yep.
Either accept or reject.
I can amend it, too.
The ad, if you want to be good, will cost you roughly a hundred and, four hundred and eighteen dollars.
You've got the regular reservation rate to reject any of those. You can reject any bids if you want to, or you can reject them all.
Okay, so proceed to vote. The motion is to accept all three, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, oppose?
Aye.
Motion fails, okay?
I'll make the new motion to accept the bid on the Orion ambulance sled of a thousand one hundred, and to re-add the snowmobile and trailer. Second.
Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by Rinkie, to accept the bid on the two thousand one Orion ambulance sled, and reject the bids on the, both the two thousand one units, Polaris Indy snowmobile, and the Triton XT two-place snowmobile trailer, and rebid those. Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
I oppose. One oppose, or two carries. Forward, when you got that?
Forward, yes.
All right, then, on to skip over the street dance, and down to the fee increases there, seeking some discussion on fees, lowering the tax levy increase. Budget and finance, you wanna give us an update? Or Belinda?
The fees have been talked about in a couple different meetings, and I believe they were tabled from the last council meeting. So, that's, we do need to go through those. And then, the budget and finance met on Tuesday, and they were looking at, possibly, with changes in dollars for next year, for the city administration position, they wanted to look at some different alternatives. So, on this first, on page eighty-five, this is the sheet that has been done in the past to show percentage increases. You know, we have been, we're set right now to go into TNT at nine point five percent increase, which is a sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollar increase to taxes, and leaving seventy-five thousand, three twenty-eight to come from reserves. So, the question was posed, if we drop that property tax of seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand down to seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand, about twenty thousand, what would that look like? And that takes it down to about a six point six percent increase, and as all the budget figures sit right now, that would be a forty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollar increase to taxes, and leave ninety-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight to come out of reserves. Of course, the major portion of that is that two thousand nineteen street project levy. But some of those figures may change due to the administrator's salary being lower. Some of the things that come to mind with that are, you know, you're gonna be paying for that executive search expense, possibly, you'd have the new administrator's salary, interim pay in the meantime, potential severance pay, I don't know how that'll stand, and added attorney fees through this process. While we were at it, they, they just asked that I put in a seven point two percent increase as well, which is a fifty thousand dollar increase in property taxes, all around, and a ninety-one thousand, two hundred and seven dollars coming out of reserves. And then, I have the budget in here, as it sits, at a nine and a half percent increase.
Well, the only question that I have in, in, on the, on the fees is, Bill, have you heard anything more about how that, is there a potential lawsuit, or questioning on the building fees? Isn't there something working through some of the system there on that? Has been challenged, that they're too high?
Right, you know, I'm not aware of a particular case, but you, you do see challenges from time to time of municipal fees, and the, you know, the theory is that your fees are supposed to be tied to your expenses. And, you know, so those are, those do come up from time to time, definitely. You see, you see challenges to fees that cities charge for a variety of different things.
I recall it was more in the metro area, where there was more development. I recall it was more in the metro area where there was more development and developers were challenging those, but not, and I don't think ours are out of line, but that's something that I've read on lately.
I think finance board, we kind of, that's why we're asking to increase a lot of these because the time and effort that the admin is putting in to do these, especially when it comes to your zoning and different, uh... Different requests there.
Mm-hmm.
Takes a lot of, and our legal fees and everything, that up. Whoever likes to get paid.
There's also been a fair amount of discussion in the joint planning board with some of these rezones and bringing these fees in line with both what the county is charging and then what the township has been charging as well.
Uh, do you know what the county and the township are charging for theirs?
My understanding was that these fees had been modified to reflect what the county had been charging.
The proposed ones?
Yes.
Yeah.
For the rezones and the variances and things like that.
I actually think the county may give you $50 higher.
It could be.
I think they might actually be $150.
I know on our last, when this was tabled, there was some discussion on Vets Park and we did raise that $25. It's 125. 50 gets returned and that is the same as what Roscoe Park is charging, one and a quarter.
I don't think there's, I don't think the fees are out of line the way they're presented. The, I guess the big question we're going to have to ans...answer by the time we actually certify is what to do with the levy.
Do we need a motion to approve the proposed fee changes for next year?
We'd certainly make one, uh, well, it has to be made sometime.
I guess we would want some type of consent so that we would authorize bill to a resolution. We didn't want to have to drive through a resolution if we weren't going to approve all or like some of them just for time and money wise.
Well, I'll make the motion to approve the proposed fee and schedule for 2020.
Second.
Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Hertzberg to approve the presented fee structure here for 2020. Discussion? And that will go into resolution form?
Yeah, it'll come back in resolution form, yeah.
Officially?
If you find some history that you want to change.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose and carried?
Um, do you have an approximate balance of our reserve fund?
I don't off the top of my head. That's a snapshot that they do at audit time and I don't have.
Okay.
I'm designated to do one, right?
Mm-hmm.
Look that up and let us know. That does vary from, almost from day to day.
It does. It absolutely does. Depending after we just did a payable run.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So we got food for thought here that, when is our...
Truth and taxation is December ninth.
December ninth.
So I would just need direction as to how to operate those documents for final approval of the county.
We can only go down?
No, we can go up. Didn't we go in preliminary at 12?
Yeah. We can only go down from there. We can't go up.
Well, yeah.
And these are all, 12 is the highest I understand that.
Our recommendation has been at 9.5.
Yep, correct.
I thought, Renee said at the working session that we had 9.3.
Had to do what?
She's talking about the...
The reserve. Yeah. It sounds, seems like it was similar in that.
Ron, you had some input on that, didn't you? You want to share that?
Uh, sure. Kind of, they're, they're talking about the 9.5 and then going down, uh, lower than that. And I guess, you know, raising taxes is hard. Everybody wants to see, uh, lower taxes, um, but I feel, or I guess the, as a city, we've been in the, really in the cutting mode for the last six, eight years that the budgets have really been extremely tight. And, um, I guess if you're asking for my opinion, the 9.5 is a good place to go. It gives us a lot of, you know, just look at future projects. We want to do something with the downtown. We got the downtown project coming up, other street projects and, you know, if we don't have money, obviously we can't do it. You know, if we just look at our CIP plan, you know, we're going to need the funds.
So, um, as of October 29th, that new special city council meeting, working session, um, I could be at that time, had reported that the reserves had approximately 1.5 million.
1.5.
You said that was October 29th?
October 29th, and then the very next sentence, Alicia had commented that that doesn't seem to be a much suggested estate.
It does.
What amount is it we must keep to keep our rating?
So many months of expenditures.
That's the last thing you want to lose is our rating.
Right. I don't think there's a specific amount. Those rating agencies look at what we have and what you have, they think is great. They, they're, I think the rating agencies are happy with you having more than the Secretary of State's office would...
Recommend.
Would recommend. I mean, I think that's, from the rating agency's perspective, that's all good, you know.
Lady, the Secretary of State has not, or the state auditor has not been looking too much at...
Reserves.
At reserves.
I think their, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Their recommendation, I think, was five months of reserves. And I think the council at one point had set the goal of eight months.
Yeah.
I think this...
There was a point in time where we would get an annual letter from the state auditor saying, you know, that ours were too high. But that has been several years since that has happened. Am I correct in sensing that we're still okay then at the 9.5 that was initially presented?
It's hard for me. I'd rather see it some more like 7.1.
Yeah.
Well, it kind of depends, like Ron said, if we want to progress or stay the same or regress. And I guess I'm in favor of progressing.
I've heard of some of the cities around here that are having slightly higher ones, like up into 30%, so wow. One of them not too far from us.
I heard that, too.
Yeah.
Because it just makes me a little uncomfortable that we're talking about a nine and a half percent increase when we're sitting on one and a half million dollars of taxpayer money.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't want to take from that because we shouldn't hurt our bond rating because that will cost us more in the long run, but I find it hard to believe that a difference of 20 or 30,000 that we're going to pull from there is really going to affect our bond rating all that much.
How much are we pulling away from there?
If I'm understanding this correctly, at 7.2% we're pulling 91.
91,200.
At 9.5, we're pulling 75.
Yeah, 16% of 16,000.
Yeah. You're pulling 75 out of the, um, reserves.
Correct.
Yep.
My understanding of the world is that if you're paying your expenditures over, if it's been more than your budget, does you keep on pulling on savings? It's not a good business plan.
No, but for the last several years, I would say at least five years, there's been excess money at the end of the year that has gone into reserves because it's not been needed. So I, in the long run, I don't think it would actually be 75,000 or 91,000 that we would have a lot of reserves.
Point also is that we don't know what the actual revenue other than the levy is going to be. We don't know also what the expenditures are going to be. The only fixed on this three-legged stool is what the levy is. Typically, like you say, you know, we have a little bit of an increase because of the growth in the tax base and, you know, hopefully reining the spending, you know, being conservative with our, with our spending. You know, nowadays, 1.5 million dollars is not really a lot when it comes to, to municipal financing. You know, you, we're fortunate that, well, the dust hasn't all settled on this Interpoint thing yet, but, uh, anything like that could potentially, you know, cut deep into the... Mention the downtown, that's something that, that's going to cost the city a fair amount of money when, at least to get that project started. Your point's well taken, too, that, you know, 16, 25, 30,000 when you're looking at 1.5 million is not a lot. It does add up, whatever the council is comfortable with.
I would like to see us going at 7.2 rather than 9.5.
There's a consensus of one.
I'm on the consensus of the 4.9% and cutting the funds, like I said in the meeting before. That didn't go over really well, though. That's my consensus.
Of which?
You say 4.9%? Is that what you said?
That's what I was cutting, um, CIP funds.
All capital improvement funds. Neil, you were at the 9.5. Sean?
See a long history of 4.5, before that, 2%.
Mm-hmm.
Cost of operating and building has gone up by, I think, more than that percentage each year. I want to make sure that we have enough money to operate, like Ron said, to give everyone breathing room so we can do things reasonably, but if we're sitting on a bunch of unspent taxpayer money.
But some of that is earmarked.
Yes.
A lot of it will disappear in a downtown project if we go that route. So you can take it now and hope we have it later.
I'd rather do a nine and a half percent increase now than have to do seven this year and nine next year to get caught up again. There's my position for whatever consensus that might be worth.
That's two.
I guess that makes a consensus, unless you're going to weigh in.
Yeah, I don't know. To me, the nine and a half seems, seemed high and, and again, with the comments that, you know, we typically have been coming in under, you know, under budget and adding. I would be comfortable with somewhat less, less than that. I'm wavering there. I would, you know, and we, this, we do have until the truth and taxation to make the decision. It's just, you know, letting staff know how to prepare the, the documents for that, for that meeting. I would be comfortable with, you know, the 9.5 and then if we, after we slipped on it a few times, we can have that discussion as to where we want to end up when we actually certify. So that sounds like consensus of three?
So who prefers documents at 9.5?
Yep. And do some soul searching between now and then. And we may have a full house of people that will tell us one way or another that night, especially if they see that, uh, they see they've gotten their notices already, right?
The notices were...
Yep.
So that notice is your worst scenario for everybody.
Mm-hmm.
But reality really is when it should be left.
Yeah.
Makes you feel good.
There you go.
All right, then we will see all those come out and then we're on down to the computers here. And we've gotten good news on the Microsoft Surface Pros.
Yes, I reached out to see where we were at with these, looking at the paperwork I could find on them. And it appeared that there was a quote given from Microsoft in July for four Surface Pro Sixes. And so I reached out to the gentleman that was on this document and he said Surface Pro Sixes are pretty much obsolete now and seven is the route you want to go. There's just a few in the warehouse and so he gave me a quote on the sevens, which was actually $3.79 less per computer than the previous quote. It was asked at Policies and Procedures if I could check and see what Sixes would be, thinking, well, if they're obsolete, maybe they'd be a lot cheaper. They're not. They're the exact same quote.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know that I would necessarily need a motion for that because it is a little bit less, but maybe direction as to whether I should just order the sevens. It would be three of them and get the updated one. The laptop, the last paperwork I could find on that was potentially going through Dell. There was a sale for $794 in July and I reached out, I don't have a username or password for Dell, so I reached out to Marco, who's our IT company, thinking, well, they should be able to give me some free advice on this anyway. They said that usually the sales that Dell or anyone else like this holds is for a week at a time. They're usually a real short-lived sale. So I asked them to quote me, same style. I gave them all the criteria that was on the paperwork I found and the only thing they recommended is, because these are laptops that will be carried maybe from home to the council chambers and in a car, that you should go with a commercial grade that's a little bit better to handle traveling. And their quote came in at 97832 for a similar version. There is a, on their quote that is in the packet here, is a labor amount of $840. And when I reached out to him, he said that labor quote would be whether we bought it through them or through an outside source, that doesn't change. That is to set it up for business with the city. And so I went back and kind of looked at Marco vendors to see in the past, and it is kind of all over the board. kind of all over the board. I think it depends on the amount of time they come out here. We haven't come out here for several things. We've got three desktops in there that need to be loaded. We'll have the Surface Pros, we'll have the laptop. I think there's some top books and public works that need to be dealt with along with some tablets. You know, if they're coming out one time to all of these things, it should save a little money per item because we're only gonna pay travel expense for.
Was that eight forty per item?
That was for this particular item.
That one thing.
You know, I found anywhere from, I think there's a fire department computer that was loaded for four hundred and seventy-six dollars within the last couple of years. There was a bill in there for a top book that was like fourteen hundred and some odd dollars. So it seems to be all over the board depending on maybe what we add to it, what we load, the time it takes them. And then of course their travel time and their mileage.
Okay, just, just go to the Play Store and download and, I'm kidding.
Oh, yeah. I was absolutely shocked by that paper. I was kind of floored by that, but it looks like that's been kind of normal protocol. So the labor, I'm not sure that that varies irregardless of what we do, but because that laptop price is a bit higher, I think we would need a motion to approve me ordering that.
We're just ordering one at this time.
The Surface Pros, I would order all three of those. The laptop, just one because the consensus was that potentially a future administrator may want to decide what they want.
Yeah, okay.
And one of those laptops originally that had been checked into was for the administrator position.
Yeah. We approved the Surface Pros before, didn't we?
Correct, and they are not going up in price, I see.
Or we can move on to information.
Well, that was for Len that wanted the laptop, so.
Pardon?
Len was the one who wanted the laptop, I believe.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the quote from Marco for the laptop computer in the amount of nine seventy-eight thirty-two.
Second.
Motion by Gilmore, second by LeBeau to approve the quote from Marco for the laptop computer in the amount of nine seventy-eight thirty-two. Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Oppose? None, carried.
Okay, Jeff, can I ask you a question? I might have missed this and I apologize if I did, but you rejected the two bits for the snowmobile and the two-place trailer. But did you want to re-advertise them with a minimum bid then? Or are you just gonna take wherever the chips fall again?
That was not part of the motion. Just to read. Okay, then we have the informational, we have the, what's it for sanitation report, the police department report, investment reports that can be found on the city's website along with a multitude of other information and the ability to sign up for Code Red and enter December and January meeting dates already. I imply it's.
Before we adjourn, would it be possible to look into whether or not there's a cheaper alternative than Marco? I find it really hard to believe it costs eight hundred and forty bucks to set up a laptop. And maybe it does, and maybe that is the fair rate, but.
Well, we are in a contract.
We are in a contract, well then.
For IT services.
At the time of that contract expiration, we may have to look into alternatives.
I would agree. Are they still calling Marco?
As far as I know.
Okay. I used to get bought out and changed so often too. If, if there's nothing else, we are adjourned then. Thank you.